Okay, first item of business we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for last meeting. Motion made in second to approve the minutes. Danny, would you call roll please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And motion approved. Next item of business is Platts, Nolan Swanson, lot seven A, seven B and seven C, final plan. Any discussion on this? Got a motion in second to approve this. Danny, would you call roll please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Motion approved. Next item is zoning, text amendments. There was a lot of discussion for about three months now about this zoning. Resolution amending Bradley County zoning resolution to remove duplexes from F A R and R one districts, and they will be in R two. Any discussion on this? Your motion? Motion?
Approved.
In second. Danny call roll please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, motion approved. Next item of business is a use permitted on review this public hearing, so we'll need to go into a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the audience wants to come and speak, you'll need to come to the podium. State your name, you've got five minutes.
Let's deal with property on three eighty-four Roark Lane, if anyone's curious.
Three eighty-four Roark Lane, McDonald. Use permitted on appeal for an indoor dog kennel and training center. Need to go to the podium please.
Yes.
Do we have a microphone there?
Yes, my ma- my name is Harry Harnett. I appreciate being heard this evening. I've got my business partners Jackie Young and Phil Crowe with me. I'm a resident of Bradley County. In addition, retired restaurant executive and member of the Chattanooga Kennel Club. We looked at a piece of property at, the address is three eight four Ro- Roark Lane in McDonough. It is zoned agricultural, so a kennel would be in fact permitted there. We intend to, if approved, we intend to build a eight thousand square foot dog kennel and training center will be the only indoor training center for dogs in the county present. In addition, you know, I'm going to build my final retirement home there. Smaller facility, I've learned if you build a bigger facility, your children come back and move in with you. So a smaller home in the middle of the property, approximately twenty-seven hundred square feet. I provided to you already an elevation of the property and a floor plan of the kennels. Of the location. We have to build a driveway that will be about twenty-four feet wide. That will go all the way up to the kennels. It'll be close to seven hundred feet. There's an easement there that goes, I think forty-six feet, so it'll be bed center in that particular thing. This is a heavily wooded area. We will probably only clear, it's eleven point seven acres, we will only clear about three acres. We want to keep the, you know, the woods and its heavily forest, you know, intact. This facility will be state of the art. It will be heavily insulated and it will be soundproof, so you know, the dogs will not bother anyone. In addition, it will be closed on Sundays and we'll have hours that we think will be about from seven o'clock to six o'clock, Monday through Friday, and then nine to four on Saturdays. Any questions or concerns?
I have several questions. You're the property owner, is that correct?
We have a purchase and sale agreement contingent on.
Contingent on this. Who's, is the property owner here?
I believe she's not here.
Okay. Tell me a little bit more about the facility, is this for boarding?
Yes, it'll be boarding and training.
Boarding and training.
Yeah, there'll be, you know, overnight boarding of dogs. They have, you know, the house, there's different sized kennels based on the breed or based on what's required by law.
How many, and it just, just dogs?
Dogs and there'll be a small catatorium.
How many animals?
There'll be approximately, I think there's forty kennels. So it'll be about forty, forty dogs, of course you're never completely full, except the ones I bring my dogs to. They're full. And, you know, a small catatorium that will, will house approximately twelve cats.
It looks like on the drawings, and you mentioned that it's indoors and soundproof, but it looks like there's an area for an outdoor run, is that correct?
Yes, there is an outdoor run. Certain dog kennels will have access to the outside during the day. They'll have no access in the evening.
Okay. And it looks like too, that there are roughly twenty-five parking spaces that you're planning for?
That's correct.
At the facility, so you're expecting quite a bit of traffic then?
Well, kennels in my experience, they get people to drop off almost all at once. And then they're gone. And then when they come pick up typically Mondays, because we'll be closed Sundays, you'll get a lot of people that'll come in. Not a lot, but you'll get, you know, a certain amount that'll come in that, that particular time, so there's not a lot of traffic. Traffic and there's no overnight parking there at all.
Will you, will you provide, I can't believe I'm asking this, will you provide doggy daycare? It's a thing. Is that a concept too, or is this strictly boarding, overnight boarding?
We haven't decided on that at, at this particular time, but, but, you know, the main, the main purpose will be boarding and of course the, the training facility.
Okay. You mentioned your, your plan too is to build a home on the backside of the property. Have you done any soil testing yet to determine if it can perk?
We've got some that has perked, but we haven't had it completely. The previous owners had it perked towards the front of the property, but I want to, I have to perk the, and we've got that arranged to go forward based on what happens this evening. To, you know, perk the rest of it to make sure that it's, it's fine.
But you don't, so you don't know that back area where the residents will be, you don't know yet?
No, I do not know at the present time if it's able to be perked.
Okay. Thank you.
How will the waste from the kennel be handled?
It'll be in a, a commercial septic system. With a kennel, you have to have a certain, you have to have a kennel system for dog waste. And it will be channeled into that facility, we'll have it pumped once a year. It'll be, you know, goes into a large tank and then to the leach lines. And then we'll also have a, another septic system for the house.
You have leach lines from this tank?
Yes.
To be from the various residents other than the residents of the people involved?
I'm not sure exactly, but there's, there's a couple of, there's, there's, you know, neighbors on both sides of the property. They're built, they're probably a little bit closer to the road than what this facility will be because of the fact that this is a flag lot and it has very long driveway potentially. So to answer your question, I, I, I would say it could be over a thousand feet on some, it could be as close as five hundred feet on another. And some of the adjacent properties, it would be even farther away. Now, in this area, there are horse farms, there are goat and, and mules for sale. So I mean, it's such, this is, this is agricultural area.
This almost seems like a business setting to me more, and my, my first thought is, is the amount of traffic that would be coming in and out. When people are bringing their animals to drop them off, you said a lot of times people come all at once. And so the, the volume of traffic coming in and out, could that be a disturbance to the neighbors?
Like I said, it, it's typically they come in the morning and they come in the after, well, then they, they pick up usually in the evening, first thing in the morning. How long they've housed their dogs.
Yeah.
But that's why we wanted to provide enough prop, enough parking just in case.
I noticed one portion of this was talking about training. How many animals are you planning on training, just what's in the facility or whoever wants to bring?
You know, there's certain, certainly, you know, I show Afghan hounds, I have some champion Afghan hounds. And you need to show them in an indoor setting typically. You know, so it's, it's large enough to do that. You'd probably, you could probably train for shows, maybe as many as twelve dogs in there. Some people would want to, you know, have specialized obedience training and that would happen at a different time. But again, it would be while the kennel is open, the hours of operation.
That answers some of my questions, because a lot of the training classes I've seen for animals, I've seen them indoor and I've seen them outdoor and I've seen them do both indoor and outdoor.
You can do it outdoor, but, but particularly with Afghan hounds that I show, they don't like to go out with those long coats in the rain. So, you know, our, our whole prux is to make it an indoor kennel or an indoor training facility. You know, the Chattanooga Kennel Club, we hold our meetings and our training sessions at Tri-State right now. And there's, you know, but it's very limited to do that. Sometimes they hold their training sessions down at the Greenway in Cleveland. So, you know, to have this opportunity to have an indoor one that, you know, is soundproofed. I mean, listen, I'm going to be living on the property, I don't want to hear dogs either.
Is this, so this kennel will be only special for, I mean, it's only for this one type of hound?
No.
It's not?
No, no, it's just that I, I'm, I have Afghan hounds.
That's the reason I brought up the outdoor and the indoors, because I know normal schools that I've ever seen them training animals, it's, it's a mix. It's a mixture of different animals.
It's not our intention to train outside.
Okay.
I have a question, so ultimately you're looking at it upwards of sixty plus animals on the, on the property at one time? Forty in the kennels, twelve cats and twelve dogs or so, you're in twelve dogs, so is that correct around sixty, sixty-five?
I mean, yes, at any given time, you're correct. That's, that's, that would be the maximum. I mean, we only expect the kennels to be booked, you know, forty to fifty percent time whole. That's what our business plan was built on.
Why this property?
Pardon?
Why this property?
The property is zoned agricultural. It seems to be, it, it looks like it's easy to get to from seventy-five. It's an area that we think is underserviced for this type of operation. It will draw from Southern Cleveland, Donald, and most likely Utaqua. I mean, we've looked at probably fifty properties in the last year.
Does a, is a business like this all under agricultural?
It does, it's a use permitted on review and forestry, agricultural and residential and it's zoning.
Don't even know it.
But it's on review by the planning commission, which is why y'all are here tonight.
I didn't finish the questions that I had about the animal waste, you're talking about the slits field. Does that have to be permitted through the state? I, I'm not familiar with what you do on that.
It has to be permitted through the county. And, you know, there's, they're, they're very stringent regards to, you know, putting in a septic system for dogs.
I have no experience in none of that.
The septic's going to be approved by the state.
Yes.
It'll be a permit you buy from the state. Required saturation.
That's correct, that's why we have to have it perked.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you actually. If this property doesn't perk enough for another residence to be added to the system, would, would he be able to still put a residence on it? Or would the state approve something like that?
No. He'll have to have his own septic system back here for the house, it'll be a different. So he'll have to have a permit back here and a permit here also.
And at this point, we really don't know if it'll perk back and back either.
At this point. Like I'm, I mean, I know what it has to be on residential, I'm familiar with that, but I'm not familiar with the dog kennel. It may be a totally different saturation rate, I do not know.
Whatever the state requires.
Whatever the state requires is what will be mandated, what he has to follow, whatever the state. It'll be the same permit process. Get a resident, septic requirement.
Just, I don't know this property that well, I know there, where about it's at, but I don't know as far as walking. Is there any creeks or streams or anything on this property?
There is a creek to the back of the property.
Is there any wetlands on the front or anything?
Not that I can tell.
I see a bunch of shakes of heads back in the background somewhere.
I've walked it, it was dry, but like I said, I didn't walk it when it was raining.
Understand. I understand.
Any more questions for Mr. Arnett?
Thank you.
Okay, now we've, we've heard from Mr. Arnett, he's a potential purchaser of this property. What he wants to do is, anybody here for any objection? Yes, sir?
My name is Bill William Cone, and I represent people from Bancroft and Roark Road. There's quite a few people that would like to speak behind me, but first of all, I'd like to present you a petition with fifty-seven names on it that are within one mile or less. Property that I share is a property that is fifty feet from that property edge. Back door is from that property edge. I know of no other property that's around that property that is not residential. All of it's residential. The access for power and water, if he wants access, he has to go down a twenty-four foot drive, drive. Twenty-four foot driveway. How are you going to have two lane traffic and power, holes and water on a twenty foot driveway? All of the other driveways to the houses are simply driveways. They're not public access. The whole neighborhood, I have never, we have never canvassed anybody in the neighborhood as far as this. There are many, many, many more objections and hopefully some of the other people will support this. I don't know myself personally of any substantial agricultural that's going on within at least a half mile or so. It's basically homes. And I'm talking about a lot of expensive, nice homes. Every single person that I've talked to, fifty-seven people, and all these people are on Bancroft and Roark Road. They're not in favor of it. There are too many other problems. As far as water, all of the water comes through right down the ditch and off of those properties adjacent to and behind his house. There's, in fact, the water is so great right now that we're having trouble in the front yard of it flooding. So there's a tremendous amount of water flowing off there. And anything that's substantially hazardous or waste that's on the surface is going to be everywhere. Many other objections that I'm not bringing up because there are other people here that are more qualified denying. So anyway, I'd like to submit this. Give it to someone else.
All right, yes, from the residence. What, what is your?
Every, all, this is eleven acres. All of the residents around that. That's not even, not even. I'm a lot of people. I've been around dogs. I'll give you every single person.
Uh, my question. Uh, my question is how far do you believe the nearest residence is from this? I'm not, I'm not talking about the residents of people involved in it.
East side of the property has, I think, five. Other side of the property is a house. Three residents, east side. North side has an absolutely beautiful home that covers the whole north side. All the residents on the side are recently built with all kinds of regulations. That's about all I can tell you. There are more people that are qualified.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add those list to our minutes, please.
Do you have a motion to add this petition signatures to our minute?
Yes.
What was the motion, I didn't get it.
Just add this.
Add these names on this petition to our minute. Call roll please, Danny.
Jenny Bishop.
Aye.
Richard Burnett. Mel Griffith. Mike Graves.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mike Graves. Yes, yes. Mark Heron.
Yes.
Mike Hughes.
Yes.
Adam Lewis.
Yes.
Blake Mantu.
Yes.
Pete.
Anybody else like to speak on this behalf? Come podium, you've got five minutes.
I've got property adjourned, what he has, which I had it checked and from my property line and my sister's below me, is qualified, is counted as wetland. And Roark's fields and things flood. And I own the property right next to this. And this right here is where the fence line would be from this corner to that corner. A man owns right here is open field.
Which parcel are you looking at, is yours numbered?
Aye.
Is your parcel numbered?
No.
We've got one.
It's just a sign.
We've got one that's numbered.
Sir, if you'll come up here, I'll let you have my parcel or have this and.
Look at this and see if you can determine, let us know which number we're talking about.
Which one are you talking about here? This is the property you mentioned? This one is.
This, well, road on that, one house here, one house here. This red one, I guess, okay.
Yes, it is.
Well, I own this property right here to this corner, it's all clear land.
He's on seventy point oh three.
Seventy, that's what it looks.
Seventy point oh three is the parcel.
Okay, you're out here. Yeah, it's, he's, so yours is seventy point oh three. And then this is the field.
This is my sister's property.
Okay.
My niece lives right down here on this property. Trailer.
And that's the nine point oh two, what was your name?
Charles Earl.
Charles Earls.
This right here, this corner. Is my sister's down. And this.
So at seventy point oh five is all wetland?
That's what it's classified as on hook. Cause I checking on it, find out mine what. This here, Bancroft Road, back to the property, the hall. He went from this line straight to R. Got that much land.
I should hear, so on the back portion of the property that they're talking about, being in wetland also?
Oh, I'm sorry. Which is, this is my property, sister property. This here be classified as wetland, fine. One concern is, no ways of, unable to fix my house out here in the country.
What you're saying is around where it's showing the, the house on this property, on this track one.
Right here.
Behind it is basically wetlands, what's showing on, what you're saying.
Here. I've lived up there. Five, sixty-two years. I don't know.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Appreciate the help on the, on getting us directed who's, who's where. Body else? Yes, sir? Can I state your name, please?
My name's Kenneth Roark, I reside at three hundred Roark Lane. This is a portion of my family's farm. So I know this land very well. We run cattle on it for years, that's how we've made a lot of our living, is with beef cattle. So a little bit of history about this property that he is trying to buy. Few years back, I decided to sell the back part of my portion of the farm. So, North Cleveland Church of God preacher Mahoney came down and he wanted to buy this property. Fifty plus acres what I had at that time. And all these people behind me, they own it, the roses don't, they own their own. But most of these people have come in, moved in this property with very nice houses. And that's the reason they came there, it's a quiet neighborhood. And it's very laid back and good neighbors and we don't have no noise. And so this, back to the church of God wanting to purchase this, I was very disappointed. I have grandkids that's autistic and they wanted to build an autistic center there. And, and it would have consisted of about six cabins that these kids would have stayed in. They would have had cows and chickens and they would have had some farm animals to entertain the kids with. So preacher Mahoney, he, he said, I'll take it for the price. And he came back in a few days and he said, well, said the county mount does not permit me to take this property because it doesn't perk. So I know the exact place that Mr. Hughes talking about that does not, that does perk, but the rest of this property, it, it might, some of it might perk in July and August, the driest part of the year. But the rest of the year, this property will not perk. And that's why I didn't get to sell it to North Cleveland Church of God again with. So we do have a neighboring dog kennel about a half a mile away on Bancroft Road. And I think some of these people will verify it's a nuisance. It don't matter if they're, it don't matter if they're in a barn or they're in stables or in soundproof buildings. Dogs are a nuisance to the neighborhood. So, uh, I, I just want to let you know about the property, I, I don't really think the property will perk for any kind of yearly sewage, that's gonna be a lot. And this stream is on this slope, west, east of this property. It flows east. So if there's any wash down on this fenced in area. Then I feel like all these feces, if they wash them off. And usually people wash off concrete, if a dog duties on concrete, it's easy to wash off. So I think all these feces will go down in this creek. This creek does not run year round, but it runs most of the year around. But it is classified as a blue stream. Because I wanted to take some timber off a part of it, on my property, that flows down, and I gotta select cut those trees before I can cut any. And one of the neighbors here, uh, these trees fall across his driveway and I want to cut them. So they quit falling across his driveway during a storm. But, but nevertheless, you know, all this being said, you're gonna hear some more good stories about why this neighborhood should not. Have this, uh, dog kennel. And I think Mr. Hugh has quite a few acres where he lives, so why doesn't he put this dog kennel on this acreage he already has? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Roark. Anyone else? Come to the podium, please, state your name. Five minutes.
My name's Roger Lemongen, and me and my wife and my daughter reside at sixteen twenty-five Bancroft Road. Uh, the address that you gentlemen, ladies have before you for this property is not based off Roark Lane, based off Bancroft Road. Only one way in and one way out of this property, and it's going to be on Bancroft Road. The driveway that he'll put in runs adjacent between my property, Brian Roark's property. I have a picture of the entrance to this property. And there is literally no way that you will be able to make a left-hand turn. Make no mistake about it, we can call this agriculture all we want to, this is commercial. Twenty-five parking spaces, up to seventy animals, plus cats and dogs, and outdoor pad. I do not want to listen to dogs bark. I used to live in Hamilton Hunter, one of the largest subdivisions in the county. And I had basically a circle-the-wagons type place in behind me, where people would let their animals out to go do their business, well then they'd conveniently forget about them. And these dogs, they stand out there and bark at the wind, they bark at leaves, they bark at people walking by, nobody's bothering them. And funny thing is, is people talk about dogs, and I know people love dogs, that's fine. You know, they talk about them like they're children, they're grandchildren, granddog, fur baby. But, when somebody brings something up to the point that an animal's considered a nuisance, well, it suddenly becomes a dog. It's no longer treated like a human being, it's a dog, what do you expect? And they talk to you like you're crazy. My wife and I, we spent eight years almost looking for the perfect piece of property to build our house on. We are the blue house in the front, that gentleman right here was referring to. I wouldn't sell my house for a million dollars right now, cash money. I wouldn't sell it for two million. You know why? Because it's my dream home. It's quiet, peaceful, I have wonderful neighbors. No offense to this gentleman, I want a neighbor. I don't want a business next to me, and this is a commercial business. These dogs are gonna be going outside, on this pad, barking, I don't want to hear it. I don't want to hear one dog bark, let alone sixty or seventy or however many will be out there at one time. And that, that right there, I can go ahead and tell you, specifically Bradley County says that they don't have noise ordinances. Well, if you're disturbing my peace, I'm gonna be calling the sheriff's office, and I'll be calling it constantly. Because I stay outside on my property. My grandson comes over on the weekend, he's two years old, we play outside all day long when he's over there on Saturdays or Sundays. I don't want to listen to it. I don't want to hear it, I don't want any part of it. What happens if one of the animals were happened to get loose and come down there and attack me, or attack my, my grandson, or attack somebody else? Then what? You're gonna have a massive lawsuit on your hands. I mean, I, it just doesn't belong here. There are pieces of property that are much, much more suitable for a dog kennel than this one. And the other thing that concerns me is from what he was ta- talking about, I get the impression that he's gonna invite all his buddies to come up there from the Chattanooga Kennel Club. This is gonna turn into a much larger operation than what he's even leading on here. Uh, we do have wet issues up there, the creek that runs in front of our house is not a dry creek, by any stretch of the imagination. When it significantly rains, it floods, it actually washes out my driveway. Mr. Roark himself has had to fix my driveway three or four times before it's overrun the bank, and it's built up about six feet. So, there are serious water issues in there. And they run from the back of the property too, in behind me, because it'll, like I said, this will be in behind me. But, uh, you know, I, I don't really know what else to say other than the fact that I welcome a neighbor, I welcome somebody coming in there setting up. These, these people have taught me. How to be good to people. Because I don't have a lot of faith in people. I don't, I don't trust them. But Kenneth and Brian, uh, they've been good to me. Danny's my neighbor, he's been good to me, Mark's my neighbor, they've been good to me, and if I needed any of them, they'd call me anytime, day or night, and help me out. And, you know, that, that's what we want up there, we want neighbors, we don't want businesses. We don't want people that have nothing vested in, the realtor that bought this land from the guy that owned it before, the only reason this land came available is because when, uh, he bought the land, his, his business that he worked for told him that he'd either have to move to work somewhere else in Surveerville. Or that he would lose his job. So he had to lose. So he sold it to this realtor. Well, the realtor, you know, she had an initial plan, and I'll let Danny speak more on this, because he knows much more about it than I do. But basically, I think an initial offer was made on the property, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, and she turned it down because she was such good friends with Danny and Kara. Well, then he came back and made another offer to her, and suddenly, their friendship had a price on it. And, uh, you know, i- it's, it's just not right. I wouldn't, and if, and the last thing I'll say is this. If this dog kennel were established, right now currently, and none of us had built our houses here and I was looking for land. There is no way in the world that I would even consider buying this piece of property that we currently live on. Because at that point, with the dog kennel already being established, I have no right to complain. The dog kennel's there, I know it up front coming in. So, but, the shoe's on the other foot, we are here, we're already established. And, I mean, we just don't need to inconvenience everybody who lives here who has a vested interest in our community, for two people who have no vested interest in our community, none. There's no improvement to our community gonna come from this dog kennel being put in, nothing. Only thing that's gonna happen is our property value's gonna go, just like that. So, anyway, I would appreciate y'all voting this down and saying no on it, I really would, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Here's your phone. We appreciate the information. Seems like the consensus is much the same, let's just try to maybe one or two more, and then we'll see where we are.
I don't speak in front of people very often, they're with me. But, I live at two ten Roark. I also have a flag.
State your name, please.
I'm sorry, it's Hannah Ortell.
Ortell?
Ortell, yes. Um, I also have, uh, the flag lot that comes off of, well, there. Uh, I also looked for property at the time, my husband and I, for many years, for seven years, before we found this property. For Roark's brother. Two years ago, um, it was every bit of strength that we needed to get out of it, bad news of marriage. And in doing that, to solidify full custody of my children, I took every ounce of debt we had, as well as their Christian education, to pay for school, everything. And I, I have three degrees, I'm the director of therapy and sort of nursing for a company. Not that I'm not working. When, um, Mr. Hartnett appro- approached my realtor about purchasing, had for sale, I was trying to sell property to try to offset some of the costs, so that it was not so. Um. He approached me and he told me, you know, what was going to go in. And I went to bed that night and I thought, I cannot do this. I have so many neighbors, this isn't, but this was my dream home. It would impact that community tremendously, and I agree, I would never have bought property if there was a dog kennel there. And I reached out and, and, and did some research with regards to property value and the impact, my home is not a small home, it is a beautiful home. The impact that it would have to that and to the community, and what they stated is correct, is all residential, all around us. Mark, get up and speak, but Mark had property that he divided, and when he divided it, the, the individuals who purchased the homes put in beautiful homes. And, I took the hard road, I declined the sale. I chose to start another business and working two jobs, but at least I can go to bed at night with a clear conscience that I did not disrupt a beautiful neighborhood, and a quiet neighborhood, that when I come home, I have peace. That Mr. helps me all the time and comes up, that I did not approve something that would disrupt, because we bump each other there. Would disrupt, you know, the remaining retirement years of his life, all those things, it was not worth it to me, money was not worth it to me. So I'm asking that you please, as you take this into consideration, know that sacrifices have been made, the amount of money. Hey, would have put me in a space that I could have been in a much more comfortable position. And I chose not to, for those that were all around me, and also for myself. Um. I'm also concerned about the coyotes, I have two miniature donkeys, and then I have a couple dogs myself. Um, my little Chihuahua was killed, uh, a girl, before I could get to her bike. And, when you have that many dogs, it does not matter if, um, they're outside all the time, coyotes can smell if they're in heat from way far away. I'm concerned that it will increase the amount of coyotes that we have, they are already very aggressive, they'll walk up into the yard, I had one. Park there, and, um, didn't even flinch. So I guess, for all those things, you know, I'm sure that you're full, and it's like a vision, but. Perhaps, at this point in your life, and your seasoned years, I, I gave up everything, I gave up his rights to everything, protecting my children. The impact that this could have on my property is tremendous. So I'm just asking that you.
Okay, thank you. One more?
Makes me glad he got to get up, he stood up at least three or four times.
He was all the way in the back, that's why he was last.
Uh, my name's Mark Dietrich, um, unfortunately, a few years ago, I had to sell this particular piece of property. I had it perk tested, because it's a beautiful piece of property, but like it's been said multiple times. Especially during the wet season, you might as well be in the Everglades. That you can't drive back there, you can't do anything back there, it's muck. Um, the one place that did perk, uh, David Myers, the guy in town. He perked all fifty acres. Every place there's a home, that's where he perked. The one spot that perked, he perked it, and he said it was the best he could do to get a three-bedroom home right there. Well, if you're gonna put a dog kennel there, clearly not putting a home there. There is not a single place on that eleven acres that will perk. For you. Um. You know. They can send somebody out there and try, I've done it, I've tried, the church tried. It doesn't perk. It is mostly underwater, the spots that aren't underwater, just don't perk. So. I would highly recommend just shutting this down now. Um, nobody wants it. We all moved out there for peace and quiet, and a dog kennel is not what we moved out there. That's all I'm gonna say, I could probably say a lot more, but I'll just be rambling.
Okay, thank you. Come to the podium, state your name.
Danny Sebeck, I live at four ten Roark Lane, and on the parcel number, I live at nine point oh six. My property surrounds two sides of the entire. Both sides of it. I can tell you that, on that far lot, far lot line coming in, there's two flag lots, I put both driveways together from nine point oh seven, nine point oh six, are dated together with the county, because there wasn't enough room to get a driveway. Parents own nine point oh seven. So the particular lot in question is nine point oh one. I know everything about this property. I walked this entire fifty acres. I was the second person to purchase property from Mr. Dietrich when it went up for sale. I bought the only property that had to be cleared at the time. So I walked all this property down. That is a blue stream, designated stream, that runs the entire length on the left-hand side of that flag lot. When it gets water, it's a substantial amount of water. Neither here nor there, that's what creeks do, they drain. But it drains about ten thousand acres in that community, that particular. It's not a big issue, because when it's dry, it's great. When it's dry, it is great. For about the one month out of the year, you're gonna get it. Other than that, I know exactly where this soil perked. I called Mr. Myers myself and tried to get my search field expanded. He said, sorry. Worked with it, so I did. Got it all in, we put a three-quarters of a million dollar investment back there. I have two acres approximately, that would be on the backside of this facility. Where the facility is planned to be located, from my knowledge, I used to survey, uh, Mr. Brian Roark, he's gonna be about four hundred. Maybe a little less, because the Lemongens, pretty close, probably just a little bit. My driveway will run right beside it. It's near, that's okay, because my house is at the back. Problem is the impact. So I'm real confused, if, if this is a business, and we already have zoning regulations. The laws are already simple. We don't need a business. If the scope of this panel is to approve, deny, or whatever, let's just stop anybody else from wanting to buy it. This would be nothing more than spazza. End of the day. No difference, I mean, there's commercial property right around the hill that the county spent a lot of money on. Go down Harriman Road, great facility location. Those businesses won't care for it. I'm not a dog hater, I like dogs. But I'm worried about our investments. If I had to take the, me and Mr. Earl share the same property line at the back of this property, his property and my property completely, order the back of it. Tom Collins' property's right through the woods right there, it's a road superintendent. He didn't want to be involved, and that's fine. This will impact everyone in this community. No one here is in favor of it, we all made substantial investments, it's quiet, it's peaceful. Nice, it's really nice, I know why, I, I. And if you wanted to build a house, this facility wasn't an issue, I'd be one of the greatest neighbors you've ever. Just in good conscience, staunchly object to this, because this is nothing more than spazza. So, any questions about the property, I'd be happy to answer it, I know a lot about it. If I can help you in any way. The realtor that actually is selling the property, she had planned to build a home, didn't like the lumber price, decided to sell it instead. Okay? Her prerogative, fine. Great place to live, terrible place for a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Quickly. Okay. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed.
Three eighty-four Roark Lane, McDonald, Tennessee, tax map oh six three, parcel zero zero nine point zero one, use permitted on appeal for an indoor dog kennel and training center. Got you. Your motion?
I'll motion for the purpose of a vote. I will motion for the purpose of a vote.
Second, and just for a vote.
Motion and second for the purpose of a vote. Janie, call real please. For the zoning or against the zone? Use? For the zoning use, for the dog kennel, for it, or against it? Yes.
Yeah.
Two permitted.
Yes, yes, means they can. That's, okay. Uh. No.
Approving to.
You vote yes on it, you're voting to approve, or you vote no, it's. You vote yes on it. You're voting to approve. You vote no, it's not.
Not approved. Yes, that's true.
I just made, needed to make sure. Janie Bishop, no. Richard Burnett?
No.
Mike Graves? Mel Griffith?
No.
Mark Karen? Mike Hughes?
No.
Adam Lewis?
No.
Lake Mantoo?
No.
Pete, no.
Okay. The no vote passes, so this, uh, training center and dog kennel right now is denied. Any other business come before our meeting tonight? Seeing none, we declare the.